Okay, welcome everybody to the February 27, 2017 Show Regional School Committee meeting. Calling the meeting order at six o'clock PM. First up on the agenda is citizens comments. Don't see any citizens, so we'll move into new business. So for those of you who've been on the school committee for a couple of years, you know that back in 2015, we did the district's first ever staff climate survey. So Nicole and I worked on that together with the superintendent at the time, and distributed the survey across the district. And I think it was timed with when the kids were taking the MCAS test to try to encourage the staff to take the survey. We got really strong results, not results, response, thank you, response rate. And at the time, we said that because there were things in the survey that needed to be addressed, and many of those items were addressed. We did a great job with that, so kudos to the rest of the committee. That we would do it every two years to be able to track progress and stay on top of some of the issues that the staff has, some of the things that we're doing well. So this is that time. So I'm going to turn the whole discussion over to Nicole for this year's staff climate survey.
Well, okay. As you can see, we put the, I asked to have the 2015 results put in our packet just so you could see what the questions are. We're not going to talk about the 2015 results, obviously. But we're not really going to change the questions. We have a baseline, and that's what we're going to go from. Anecdotally, however, there were a few things that we felt like we needed to tweak and add. So one of those is in technology. We're going to add a couple of questions about the effectiveness of the ticket process, and the timeliness, and then the effectiveness of it. And then to address the social-emotional component that really wasn't talked about so much in the survey before, where the epicenter is, which is the home. We're going to add a question, a whole section of, I believe, six questions, six or seven questions, about how the support from the town, and the community, and the home is perceived in the school. Yes?
Are you going to clarify what SEL is? Because there's a, there is a confusion about the definition of what that is.
We're not addressing social-emotional per se. We're saying, do you feel support from the town? Do you feel support from families? Do you feel that you can go to families? Does the administration support you in talking to families? That, that kind of thing. Do you want to add any advice to that?
No, I think the point of it is not to define social-emotional learning, is to understand if the constructs are there in order to support the emotional state. Does that clarify? Right, this is a staff climate survey.
Because it's obviously very broad. We can't go, you know, to individuals. But on a very broad scale, do you feel like you can, or are encouraged to talk to families? Are encouraged to talk to towns? Are encouraged to talk to your school committee? So we got those two. And so any other questions? Because there is one thing of advice that I would like to ask.
What's the timing, Nicole?
We'll probably be able to go whenever we want. The, looking at the calendar, the week of the 13th, the parent-teacher conferences, there is an afternoon of parent-teacher conferences started on, for K through eight, on that Friday. If we want to do it before parent-teacher conferences are over, I would suggest we launch that week. If we want to wait until MCAS is in full swing, probably a week or two later. And then we have the due date on April 15th. So how long do we want the survey to be open for?
What if we do it, what did we do?
It was three weeks before, actually. We had it open for three weeks.
All right, so we wouldn't, yeah, I don't think we'd want to do any more than three because people forget about it, and we have to send reminders. Are you guys sending, are you sending reminders, then?
Oh, I haven't, we haven't discussed it yet. No communication has gone out about it yet.
So that would be part of the let them know it's coming?
So maybe the week of the 13th. I don't think we warned anyone beforehand, just trying to think about it. I think it just kind of came out.
Yes, yeah, that makes more sense.
But I'm all for more communication. More emails I can write, awesome.
I think we have the ones from the last time, too, to use as a template if you want to bother with them. And if you don't have them, I'll look for them, just let me know. Yeah, so the three weeks is good. A three-week window is enough. Because it took us a couple of months to crunch all that data. But now we actually can start to look at, not quite a trend because two incidents don't create a trend, but, okay.
And things are a lot different now, obviously, too. But looking through my notes, I did remember that anecdotally there was a lot of confusion about the neutral option. And how it was going to be perceived between strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, and strongly disagree. And people who had no opinion either way would, you know, hit neutral. But then people who, you know, had it on both sides, you know, they're like, they strongly agreed on one hand, but they didn't agree on the other, you know, so they would check neutral. And so it was hard to ascertain on some questions what exactly that result meant.
Didn't we get some comments, too, from the staff that said they were a little bit nervous to respond to the survey because they weren't certain that the results were going to be confidential? And so there was some middle-of-the-road in certain areas. I remember that coming up.
That probably, that probably didn't. And we can continue to stress this is a confidential survey. And unless you say, I'm Nicole, and I'm so representative, we're going to have no idea really who you are.
I have no point that it asks for a name, or?
No.
No, because it's coded that way.
And there's even a part where we say, don't tell us your name, please.
Is there option, they do write neutral, that will comment their job?
Every section, if you look at it, every section has a free-form writing section in it.
And that wasn't included, did people make comments, or was it?
Yes, they did.
But we did not, we provided the verbatims to the administration by school with redactions to protect people's identifiers.
So I would just like to add perhaps an additional button of no opinion. So...
That's not a bad idea.
Like, just, I was looking through the questions to see what, if you look at question 32, it is a question about, does the district take adequate steps to hire quality people? Some people who are surrounded by great people just might not care and might not even go, know the steps that go into it. So they would have no opinion on that. But if there is a neutral result, we're not going to know if people are just not impressed at all with the hiring, or if they just, again, they just don't know.
So is the, so are you asking, or are you making a recommendation?
I'm making a recommendation that we add a no opinion.
Is it no opinion, or, I mean, I have to?
Yeah.
Some of them have a not applicable.
Yeah.
Right, NA is what I was thinking, yeah.
Or I was thinking more like an undecided, rather than, because neutral and no opinion seem very similar to me. But if you, if you can't decide?
Uncertain, or?
Don't know.
Don't know.
We have people go, this button.
So strongly agree, agree.
Neutral.
Disagree, strongly disagree. And no opinion, or not applicable. Or, I don't want to answer this question for whatever my reason is. I'm not answering it. I just, I like odd numbers in surveys, just because it's... I mean, I...
Anybody feel strongly about any of it?
If the neutrals become no opinion, does it change the results at all?
Well, it'll give us a better understanding if, because that was the big question. There were some questions, we had big chunks of neutrals. It was like, well, we know that out everybody that's in there is really neutral because we had heard from them anecdotally, like Nicole said. So is it that they're really neutral? Or is it that they don't want to commit one way or the other? Or is it that they don't really care? So I think that your point is well taken.
I think NA kind of just applies to everything.
So the only thing that you can have with that is to Lynn's point. If you tweak this at all, you're going to change numbers. So it's going to be hard for you to get it year over year. So if you change neutral to something else...
So you keep neutral.
But if you add something, somebody that parked something somewhere may take it and put it under the new thing that you've added, which maybe that's where they felt all along, but that's not what the number is going to, you know what I mean? It's going to change it. So it's going to take you two surveys to now really, of the same exact format in order to be able to get it a little bit way to...
Well, but we really don't know what that, what that response meant anyway.
Right, no, I get that point. But I'm just saying that it will skew all the numbers. So it's going to be hard to point to, you know, certain things. I don't know, specific questions, but you may say, yeah.
On the other hand, I would agree, I could agree with that if it was more of the opinionated responses. Like the, I agree, I disagree, I strongly agree, I strongly disagree. Then that would, that would harm us, I think. Not us, but that would harm the results. To your point, yes, that'll take us a couple of years to kind of figure out where those people lie. But we will know those people who have an opinion. And that's really what, that's really what we need to know, is where is the opinion? Hello?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, yeah, Sam Lance's, Mrs. Darcy. You know, there's a piece of me that says, but to Nicole's point, isn't it that you're wanting to tweak this and make it better every year? And what's more important, the actual benchmark? Or the information that you're getting from the survey? I would say I'm okay with tweaking it right now because I think that that's part of the process, part of the thoughtful process. So I don't know that I would see the benchmark as being the be-all and end-all. And I'm not saying that that's where you were going. But I wouldn't hesitate to make the change, any change.
And the vast majority of the survey is going to be able to still be benchmarked.
Yeah.
Because the applicability of the other questions is still there.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Do you have what you need, do you think?
I think so.
That's what I do have. Question, I wonder if it is appropriate, because often in many districts, there's sort of feeling among some teachers that they're not well-supported, they're buying supplies for their classroom, for whatever reason, maybe, I don't know why. And is it, would it be appropriate to quiz teachers about that particular topic? That I spend money on my class, and don't ask for reimbursement, or whatever? Is this the appropriate time or place to ask that sort of question? To see if we have that kind of particular issue?
I hear what you're saying.
And you actually don't know what the answer is?
And I don't, you know, and I think about it, like, go back to like, open houses, right? When you have kids in the schools, you have open houses, and the teachers put up these little like, I don't know, like apples on a tree with, you know, the things that they need for the classroom that they may not have the budget for. And all the parents take all the stuff, and there's always a couple of parents at the end that just gather up what's left over to help the teachers. But I think that the point of this survey is to understand the opinion on certain things. That budget issue really belongs to the principal. And I would think that...
Well, it does, but there's another piece of me, too.
It can be a climate thing in the sense that, oh, I'm not supported for things that need to happen.
But there is, and I will defend Mark on that one because there is a question 34 that says, my area has enough staff to support quality, which is a budget issue, correct? I mean, to some extent. So I think you could easily add one in that same area that says, you know, there's adequate material support for my home.
Well said. Is that, okay. That works.
The only other thing that I have is the technology side. I know you've got a couple of questions that are in here. But again, this is rolling out. Chromebooks now are going into year three. And I think, maybe this isn't the place for it, maybe it is. But I think it would be a really good idea to get some teacher feedback on how they feel the Chromebook initiative is rolling out, how technology is rolling out for the kids in the lower grades, et cetera. Are they getting the support, the PD, that they think that they need specifically for the Chromebooks? You know, sort of get a measure on the pulse of that, where things are going.
You know what, Neil, I don't know what you think about this and the rest of you. I think that need should be a separate.
I'm fine with that.
But because I think it's so important, and it's going to have such, I mean, what's coming up for next year, once this budget's put to bed and we start looking at what our goals are for next year? We know that technology is going to be one of the two top issues that we're going to be wanting to look at. And I think that, at that point, like, I wouldn't want to, I mean, could we add a question or two, maybe? But I wouldn't want to short shrift that area. I would want to do a full-out examination of...
And then you can focus on the actual people who are using the technology. Yeah, no, I don't think you're right.
I actually agree. I think it bears its own topic and its own survey, to be honest with you. Because I think we would want to look deeper.
Right.
But it's, it's well taken, Jen.
Okay, so I wasn't here for the original one. Is it broken down at all? I know in the beginning, it's teachers, support staff, administrative staff. Is there any way to look at the data by area?
Yep.
There is, okay, I just have...
We can cut the data, that's why the upfront demographic piece is built the way it is. So we can cut that data by school, by grade level, by town, by subject area. By tenure. Yeah. Okay, are we good? Okay, that was good, thanks a lot. Okay, so now we're going to move into the old business part of the agenda. And we've got two items here. One is the FY18 budget discussion, FY18 budget discussion. And that's the first one, it's going to take up a majority of this time. We're not going to discuss any recommendations regarding pre-K, kindergarten, and extended day tuition here. This is simply about the budget. We'll talk about that separately because it is not a piece that we're using to offset the budget. It is a philosophical discussion that will be separate. So I'm going to turn over the FY18 budget discussion to the superintendent because they were working over the vacation when many of you had a vacation.
Thank you. And Pat and I will both speak to a number of these things. So this is, again, the same template you've seen all the way along. We had, and I'm sure Mr. Darcy will report over, you know, with regards to the finance subcommittee. I think that we had a very good finance subcommittee meeting today. Very, very productive. We, I think, we've landed where we think we can land tonight. And I think that what we're going to do is kind of, because we've given to you every step of the way, what we're thinking, where we're at, positions that we've included, some of the thinking behind some of the other considerations that are kind of driving the thinking, what we're doing about staffing. So tonight really should, I'm hoping, should be kind of that last snapshot. Here's where we've landed. We have contacted our three communities and talked to them about the percentage differential for each community so that everybody's known we were very, very transparent in our approach. You're going to get a plethora of sheets tonight. And we're going to, Pat and I are going to speak to all of them. So I'm going to take a look at the first slide. Here's where we've landed. FY17 budget last year that was voted was $50,319,249. The final budget that we're presenting tonight to you is $52,076,385 for an increase of 3.49%, which is honestly very good. If you take a look around at what other communities are doing, you're going to find that their differential is far greater than this. So we feel comfortable in bringing forward tonight a very conservative budget. I will say that there are some areas here that we had to take a look at, some fixes that we made as a result of the forensic audit, as a result of the Masco component. So those are kind of all in here. It's tighter than I would like to have, I will be honest with you. I don't feel this is a growth budget. This is simply, this is what we're going to do right now. One of the things that I can honestly say is that this led us down so many holes. And I say that with affection. But so many different holes as we started to peel away things. And that's where we started to say, well, wait a minute. What is kindergarten actually costing us? Wait a minute, what are all these programs actually costing us? And so we started to go down these holes where things hadn't really been pulled together and aggregated like we would have liked them to be. So tonight, for example, when we talk to you about an extended day after this conversation, we'll talk about what we put into that because it was never, from our lens, aggregated in a way that made sense to tell you the whole story. And I think that that was a comment, I think actually Miss Buddy, that you made last year, or last school committee meeting as well. You know, what does that whole picture look like? So we did that with these three programs, with the K, with the pre-K, with the extended day. But I would also want to reiterate, that has nothing to do with the budget piece that we're talking about tonight. So I want to be really clear. So this is not something where we were looking, saying, well, jeez, we have to have that in order to make this work. That's absolutely not true. That's not what we've done. Two totally separate animals, okay? So we're at 3.49% as a general increase. When you take a look at what the assessment looks like, because that, of course, is different, you want to look at the far-right-hand columns. So what that means to Bolton is a 3.86% differential. Lancaster is a 4.61% differential. Stowe is a 4.23% differential. The total is 4.21% differential. We, as I said, we have contacted each of our communities to have some discussion. I also want to point out, this is not the first time we've contacted our communities. Particularly, for example, whether it's Lancaster, where we've actually gone and met with them a number of times. Dawn Loew still continues to be regularly, even though Lancaster is not. We don't have a town administrator right now. Dawn still comes regularly. And we always have lots to talk about.
He's my town administrator, by the way.
Now there's not lots to talk about. So, you know, he's been in the loop consistently. Every time he comes, we talk budget. When I went to visit with Bill Wrigley, I had a discussion with Bill Wrigley. We've got another caller to him. So I think that we've been very, very upfront throughout this entire process with our communities. So that's where, because I knew you'd want to know what's the bottom line. So what's the bottom line, and then I'll back out of it thereafter.
Is there anything missing in this budget? Like, that's going to be added, transportation and?
Everything is in here. Everything is in here. Driving efficiencies for us, even as we went into the tail end of this, continue to be basically the same as they have been all along. Staffing, where there's natural attrition, we're able to do that. If it's others, we may have to take a look between now and March or April and say, we may have to look at doing some other things here rather than just natural attrition. But let me give you an example of both. So natural attrition, for example, when I look to Florence Sawyer, we had somebody at the K level retire. When you look at the census numbers, as well as the registered numbers for K coming in, we could see that that, through natural attrition, could be dealt with as a single cut. But we also knew with Florence Sawyer, we had concerns with this current grade three group. And we just, even though, and it's one of those moments in time where I'm glad that the policy gives us latitude by making the changes that you made this year to the policy. Because we took a look at it and said, you know, we're not comfortable. Even though there's not a tipping point in terms of actual numbers, we do feel there's a tipping point in terms of needs of that group. So when Principal Bates approached us and said, you know, I really think I need to go to another class in that particular group. We took a look, and that's an example of other. We have somebody else coming back in from a leave that has certification that we are going to be able to put right into that position. And it's almost a cost-neutral position for us to be in because that person is already within the district. So that's what I mean when I talk about others. So natural attrition, where it can happen, other, whatever other might look like. Program efficiencies, this is on a couple of different levels. Looking at some things, as we've talked in the meeting prior to this meeting for personnel, you know, looking at the high school, for example, are there some program efficiencies that we can make there? And we've had a number of discussions with Dr. Graham over that very, on that very issue. So you'll see us probably come forward in March or April with some suggestions. Again, monitor it, but we do have some ideas for some program efficiencies that we're looking at there. Another area of program efficiency that we're looking at, not only are we looking at this year, but we're also looking ahead. Because this process took us down so many different folds to look at, it also brought in some things as we look forward to 19 and 20, like year 19 and 20. And we're looking ahead that far. So we're not just looking at next year's budget, we're looking at the years coming up, and saying, what are other efficiencies? So for example, one of the things that we put forward that's still in here is the programs, the two additional SpED programs that Joan DeAngelis had talked to us about earlier. One at Florence Sawyer and one at Center. Those are still in the budget because we feel that by drafting those programs differently, manning them differently, we will have efficiencies in them. So we are looking at that. Pre-K 2 is something else that we're going to have to look at. I don't know as much this year, but maybe in the next couple of years. I do wonder if we can't look at some efficiencies in pre-K rather than how it's running right now. And again, we're having a lot of discussion on that right now with Joan DeAngelis because you remember that SpED is a key component to building those pre-K programs. And so that tied in with regular ed. So we are tying our discussions right now between Joan DeAngelis and our elementary principals. So that gives you an idea of some of the program efficiencies that we're looking at. Staff salaries and program lines, we've already brought that up with you before, but I want to just bring it up again. For example, like extended days, another one of those examples where the salary was kind of split between lines, and we put it all in extended days. So that's just an example. Actually, we did the same thing with our pre-K as well. So that when you take a look at the program, you're seeing what that program costs. Not, well, we've got a piece over here, and we've got a piece over here, and we had a piece over here. It's like, no, it's all here, it's in one location. I'm hoping that we've captured everything. We've tried really hard this year. I won't know until we go one more cycle because we'll be able to own that budget and take a look at it. And if we need to make tweaks along the way, we will. Enrollment, as always, is something that we take a look at, both sides. And I gave you the example tonight of where we think, you know what, we can probably cut a position here, but you know what? We really need to add a position over here because it's due to... So enrollment, just in general terms, has been something that we have taken a look at throughout this process and going right into the tail end. In fact, even sitting today in principal meetings, that's still a key driver for us. We are having ongoing principal discussions. I mean, we've done that throughout this whole entire process. We started, I think, in late November when we first started. We're still having them, I mean, even day-to-day was with principal meetings tomorrow and Thursday. So we're still having these discussions at the principal level because, again, they're their buildings, we give them as their buildings. And, you know, we don't want to make something, a decision at our end that might jeopardize part of their vision or their view at the other end. So they're very active partners in this. Something else that's ongoing is SpED discussions. And just for multiple reasons. But I would also say that we include Joan, we've included Joan DeAngelis in on most of our budget discussions. So that SpED was always at the table, it always had a voice. And right now, it always has a voice in every one of these principal discussions. So I would want folks to know that that's a critical component to our work. The staff request updates, we've kind of gone through everything, the yellow sheets that were in your binder at that point in time. Basically, the last of the requests that we had talked about last time, update, nothing's really changed from that. So it's basically those positions that were there are still in here. What I would say, though, is, and I described this the other day to Chair Ramosko, I do see a bit of a shift here in terms of, some programming efficiencies provide some room for us, or opportunity for us to make some changes to them, to maybe downsize them or whatever, when, in fact, we have other holes over here that really need attention. And, you know, like, one of those examples is like the AD position that she had requested, you know, in terms of giving... you know, in terms of giving her some support with regards to accounting. And it's our A.D., and that, those programs go through a lot of money. And we really need to have somebody with a real eye on that all the time. So that position is still in there, you know, as an example. So the, you'll remember that we had it originally, I think, at 850. I think we took it down to the rate around that $200,000 mark or a little bit less than that. And so that's where we landed with that particular component. So in a nutshell, that kind of, that kind of wraps up the whole piece. But I do wanna just speak to a couple of other things, a couple of other sheets that you've got in front of you. You had asked about percentage increases. You did get a sheet that looks like that. I did say to Chair Ramosko tonight, I hope that, I hope that you won't see fit to ask for more cuts or downsizing this budget some other way. Because I just, I don't know that I'll feel comfortable with that. But I'll just put that on the table. Of course, it's a school committee's decision. If you decide that you're gonna send me back to do that, then that's my job to go back to do that. But I just wanna say, I feel that we're as low as we can be right now.
So can I ask a clarifying point on these reductions? This is not, this is based on this new perspective, not the one from the last time?
Nope, that's this new, that's right.
Okay, so, okay.
You, you basically have kept up with us at every stage. And when we presented, when we've made those additional cuts or reductions or what have you, we've come forward and brought them forward to you. And tonight, this is the last night to say, this is the final from our perspective right now.
So where are your pain points in this budget?
I think, that's such a great question. I think staffing just makes me, it makes me a little leery at times because I just feel that we're cutting so close to the line. And I just wanna make sure that, that the education of the child is so important to me that that's where we're at, that we're doing the right things for kids. Which I know everybody around the table feels like. I mean, I'm just the same as all of you. So you just don't wanna see things removed if they don't have to be. However, there's nothing in here right now that I think, oh my gosh, we, you know, I'm not comfortable with this. I think tonight, moving forward, I feel comfortable moving this forward tonight as it is. And then if there are some other things, for example, if there are some other points along the way into next year's budget that we can stop and say, listen, you know what, we're seeing the efficiencies, additional efficiencies, then I'd like to come before you in, say, December or January. So you know what, we've found some efficiencies over here that we didn't see coming. Can I please add this or that into it? An example right now is Facilities Department. So right now, we have a Facilities position of a plumber on the block. So we've had it all year long. We've offered the position twice, and twice was denied, declined, because we weren't paying enough for the position. So we're moving into the end of the year saying, you know what, let's not even, let's not even fill that position now, we'll just leave it. So we did, and we didn't include it in this new budget that you've got. We didn't include the position, the money for it. But depending on how the year goes, and if we see a desperate need, then I'm gonna come back and I'd like to redisact that. So I think those, that's just my first reaction to that. It's a great question.
So with the way this budget is that you've just presented to us, there aren't pain points? Is that what I'm hearing? I need to...
I would've gone with the 8% to begin with.
But look at how much wonderful work we did on efficiency. And that's, I'm talking about programmatic efficiencies, right?
I feel that based on what we've been through this year, I just feel strongly that we keep it conservative right now. And next year, I think we need to look at a stronger growth budget than we've got this year. This year, I just feel it's conservative, almost too conservative. But I feel comfortable in putting it forward. But do I think it gives us a lot of room to do a lot of growth or a lot of really neat things? And to show that it's regional school district, no, I don't, I don't. I feel it's just so close to the bone right now. So I don't feel that there's a lot of room for me to take a lot of risks in academic program making, for example.
Are you, are, is, does this budget recommendation suggest a reduction in any of the programs that are currently happening that aren't being utilized?
Yes.
And I mean a reduction as far as, will the kids feel it, will the families feel it?
Well, I think anytime you take away any staff means that that's going to affect some child somewhere in some form or another, you know. But I'm gonna go back to, you know, an earlier discussion we've had in terms of, if it's, for example, and I'll use the high school as an example. If you've got classes that are running very, very small, then you need to look at that and say, wait, wait a minute. Of course, that's gonna affect four, or five, or 60 kids in the high school case. But when you look at the district at large, I'd rather be putting those, like, again, a shift of the money to where I think it needs to go where it will affect more kids or what have you. So I think it's more about a shift right now. But nobody ever wants to make redu-, honestly, nobody ever wants to make reductions, so. No, but I, I would like to put on the table that I would come to you next year with a different type of budget than I'm coming to you this year with.
And I think that, you know, the forensic auditor shared with us it was gonna take a couple of budget cycles for, since, going back to what you said, for us to understand what really is in there, what the impact of some of, some of the changes and the shifts that were required for us to take are gonna mean. And then at some point, you know, you've gotta be able to get your arms around the actual curricular structure. Do you have what you need there? And maybe at that point next year, we are poised for, now we can take off. But I think this year, it appears as though we were looking at, we knew there was money in the budget. We didn't know where the money was, and is it being, is it being spent where it's needed? And that's really what I'm looking for when I say pain points is, are you spending the money that you need to spend in order to support student achievement and learning in the schools?
And I, and I believe right now that there's no, there's no school in this district right now that is going to feel pain, and to use your word. You know, I feel, in fact, in some ways, I feel almost the opposite. Like when I look to Florence Sawyer, I'll just use that as an example. I feel good about how, how we're manning that school for next year, you know. I think too, that what comes into this, whether you talk about the forensic audit or Mascos or what have you, there's, with all of that, and with shifts comes a change in paradigm. A change of how we look at things and how we think of things. And we're doing the same thing with special education. Like we're looking at that through a bit of a different lens, you know. So this, this process, because we went so deep, took, and still probably not deep enough in some way, but so deep in a lot of ways, gave us a chance to examine a lot of different things we otherwise probably wouldn't have looked at. But I don't feel right now that there's any school across the district that is going to feel, if you can use the word, a pain right now. I don't, I don't feel that.
All right. All right, questions from the group? Just let me know who has questions, and I'll take them one at a time. Jennifer?
All right. I have something to point out. I did talk to our finance director, and I know you guys are aware of the situation in Lancaster. The increase that it comes out at 4.61 is actually 5.1, because there's a 20% decrease in our capital. So the actual operating budget is a 5.1 increase for Lancaster. As opposed to folding in capital, which had a decrease, significant decrease. It's $143,000, a big decrease. So what Cheryl told me this afternoon is that leaves the town of Lancaster level-funded for everything, the rest of the town, not level services, so there's gonna be cuts in the rest of the town. It leaves us with a $221,000 deficit. Which potentially means Lancaster is gonna have to cut. Or we do the O-word. And I don't think an override would go in town.
You know, we were acutely aware, as I mentioned to you before, we were acutely aware of that. And one of the things, you know, we had said to each of our towns is, we don't wanna be the driving force behind an override for you. And Lancaster was just, we absolutely understand exactly what you were saying because we saw that coming, you know, all of it.
No, no, and then we've, you guys have been very open with where we're going, and we've been very open with where we are. And I know the FinCom has been expressing their concerns. But it's, it's just, I, it's, it's a hard sell for Lancaster. And we, we absolutely understand that. There aren't any revenue numbers. Did any E and D get put into this budget? Was this a...
Yeah, there's, yes, there is some...
We don't have any revenue figures on this.
This doesn't have revenue?
Oh, doesn't have, oh, okay, sorry.
I didn't print the revenue.
Aspect.
Because it hasn't, it hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed this last time?
Hasn't changed.
The only thing that's changed is the natural budget. Revenue hasn't changed at all. So what was the E and D that we were gonna have? My budget book.
$800,000 in the first round.
I think, I think we put it to a million ultimately. I think we ended up putting in a million.
Where, where, where is...
Yeah, that's mine there. Pardon?
Yeah, that's, what's that gonna do to the E and D?
Yeah.
What, what, what? Let me, let me just calm myself down so I can say this clearly. Where will E and D fall if we take, because I'm worried about E and D too. And Jennifer, I totally respect where you're at, and support where you're at. But I get nervous when we take E and D to a level that we say, you know, a million dollars, we don't wanna go any lower than a million dollars, and then we start to erode that. So do we know where that is, where that will land?
I'll turn to Pat, I don't know that I have an answer on that.
Well, we should have an answer on that.
About, about 800,000.
I was gonna say, I think it's 800, yeah.
That makes me uncomfortable.
We can go back and change that.
And the numbers go up?
Yes.
So just to put it in perspective, how much load would we have to go so that Lancaster has a deficit?
I think if the, if I'm right, the magic number is less than three. She had...
Oh my gosh.
Less than 3% growth in the budget? Or less than 3% for Lancaster?
Less than 3% for Lancaster. She had... Because I think at 3%, you were 60,000 out.
That's what she told me when I saw it.
Yep.
Here, we can do, it'd still be, at 3%, it'd still be $60,000.
Right, but 3% is what she put in to her budget numbers with the 60,000 deficit. And I think that they, you know, probably could reconcile that out of free cash. But there's no stomach in the FinCom to subsidize the operating budget by the extent of $220,000 from free cash.
Sure.
In the same way, you worry about the, we worry about the E and D, you know, balance.
I wanna point out, though, too, that the E and D is that you've had that million floating in and out.
Yes, no, and I...
This is not something brand new. So I wanna, I wanna point that out. So, and, and we're acutely aware of that. And if you recall, I believe it was John Sullivan who said, it's gonna take you a couple of years to wean yourself off of this. So...
There is no meaning of that. Frankly, I mean, I think we need to have that conversation too. Because if, if, where we're at, because we're talking about overrides, we're talking about, you know, you can't go over very low percentage increases, not just for Lancaster. I mean, this is just, you know, Bolton, I think it's four and a half for Bolton or something like that.
Yeah, for override?
So, yeah, so where we're at, and if you look at like the average, the average school budget runs in around, and it's a ballpark figure, about 5%.
That's right.
So we can't even play average at this point in time. So if you can't do that, and you keep cutting, two things happen. You put yourself into a death spiral for a school system. Because when you take massive cuts that are really too drastic, you then realize what you've done, and you have to try to make that up. And in order to make it up, the next year, you have to come forward and, let's say, you cut it by 2% too much, or by, you've gotta try to get that forward. But you can't because the towns are now limited. And so now you're in this override, and, and there's the death spiral right there. And how do you get out of that? Never mind E and D. I mean, we are forever on this hamster wheel. And I was saying the other, we're gonna be, there's no way we can get out of this at that point in time. I mean, that I can, maybe I'm wrong, but without any, I don't see how. Because over time, if you look at the number, I mean, there have to be like a paradigm shift in the way that we run the school system there.
I think we're moving in that direction, though.
Certainly, if you have $800,000 after you take out a million, you have no choice but to be less than a million the following year. And that's actually how you probably end up running, running it out so that you can't, you get off the treadmill.
And then boom, that's, that's the death spiral, that's right.
It's not really a death spiral, we just don't have the surplus to sustain it.
To take it.
And then the next year?
Then you have to reduce it a few more hundred thousand dollars.
You're in the death spiral.
It's not a death spiral, it's just a reduction.
Okay.
I think Jones and I agree.
But it's desirable, of course, to be able to plan for it rather than to have it happen to you. And that's the challenge, you have to choose among many things in order to do it in a planful way.
Right. Exactly.
Why is Lancaster's assessment so high? Wait, let me rephrase that. That sounds... Lancaster's assessment typically comes in the lowest of all three towns.
No.
What, what?
And we've actually, the, the number does.
Okay.
But not the percentage increase.
Okay.
The number, the number is still the lowest among the three towns. The actual number.
No, Bolton's lower, but I, it's close enough, yeah.
We've actually double and triple-checked your number. And we've actually double and triple-checked your number with the state and with your own community to make sure that the numbers were right. Because we were concerned, we've been concerned all the way along with this. So, in fact, I brought it up with Stan Star the other night as well, so...
No, our increase is greater than Bolton's, but our actual, what we're, our assessment is significantly less, a $2 million less than Bolton. But traditionally, our increase is always percent-wise higher than the other two towns.
So perhaps rephrasing your question, is there an aspect of the foundation budget that has shifted a little bit for Lancaster in terms of how things fall into our own? Or is it population as well that's changing?
You know, I don't know, oh, sorry.
I can speak to that a little bit. There was a reduction in your minimum local contribution for all the towns, but Lancaster's wasn't as high as the reduction for the other two towns. So that's why it's, it looks like it's gone, their percentage has gone up. And in fact, it's just that they didn't have as much of a decrease.
Is that part of an aspect of the house budget that's in draft form right now? I'm not actually sure that the way those numbers are shaping out, that's...
And this, this year's fiscal year '17 number, which is a final number. We used to say '17 number for the '18 budget.
Okay. All right. Other folks around the table?
I have a quick one. Just clarifying on the plumber and facilities. So did you shift money into contracts, or has that completely been dropped altogether from the entire...
We actually just took it out of the budget as such, just kind of as a way to get to the numbers that we needed it to.
So it's possible if we have run into some plumbing challenges that ordinarily might be handled by staff, or we may be a little bit short in that area because we actually don't have funds, either contractor or staff, to...
Well, well, no, that's not exactly, do you wanna speak to that, or don't you?
Sure, we've, we have provisions for contracted plumbing for next year for fiscal year '18 and the budget. But not for a plumber per se.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of an interesting concept to me, that we had a position for our plumber. If we haven't used, if we don't have someone in that position, have we encouraged SED that that person would have conducted as an employee? Or did we not need that position?
Well, we had a contract with the plumber. Because there were some things that the in-house plumber could not do. Either too big or whatever. So I guess, I guess what you're, you're asking is, we had both in the budget last time, and we didn't need one, or we didn't use one. So yes, we still, we have a contract for a particular rate for a plumber... So, yes, we still, we have a contract for a, a particular rate for a plumber to come in. And that's, that's what we've been using, and we've, we've been lucky this year so far that we haven't had expenditures that exceeded the amount of that.
So, that's an efficiency.
That's an efficiency right now, but that could change at any, any point in time. I think a plumber is a better idea if we could get one at the right price, because not only can he do plumbing, chances are he can do other things. And besides plumbing in the district, and that's, that's what Dom did. Dom did a lot of other things, preventive maintenance that wasn't necessarily done by somebody that we would call to come in and do a preventive maintenance.
See, but that's one of the questions that I, I'm just going to put this out there, and you guys can tell me if I'm crazy, and I'm good with that. So that's one of the questions I have, there's, there's, there's strategically staffing so that you're covered, and then there's overstaffing. And so my feeling with where we were this time last year is, it felt like we were overstaffed in some areas, and I think what we found is we were woefully understaffed in some areas, and I think there is some potential, and that's a good example of it. You have redundancies there, and do you need the redundancy?
Right. Well, we need it for next year, because we don't have the plumbing in the budget. We need the contract, and we have the money for that. And hopefully, if it is enough.
But, but I think that we feel comfortable and confident in our relationship with the school committee, that if something goes awry, you'll be the first to hear about it.
Yeah.
You know, like, you know, and even with the subcommittees, various subcommittees, with all of you that, that sit on this, well, you all sit on the subcommittees, you know how open and transparent we are in those meetings with you, you know, and we come to you, and I, I can think of every committee where we've come and said, "Help us think this through. Have we thought through everything? Take apart our thinking." So I think that, you know, we would do the same moving forward with this. I don't feel uncomfortable at all with the budget putting forward. It's not a budget I'm proud of that I can say, "Wow, this is like the best budget ever." I don't, I would have felt that maybe around the five or six percent. I don't feel that at this. But we are painfully aware of the realities that we're up against, and I still hear your P and Lancaster, and we so get that, you know? You know, we, we talked, we bring this down even more, but I, I'm so concerned that we will have hit a nexus point, and it gets exactly to what, what Ms. Darcy's saying. And I'm worried that if we brought it down that much further, that we would hit that point. And then I'd really be uncom- I, we'd bring something forward that would be okay for, for you, but I would feel so uncomfortable about it.
So Kathy, Susan, Kathy, yes?
Yeah, just, I know that in the, I think both Masbo and the forensic audit had recommendations about looking at different fee structures, like for rental of building and building use, and that we started, we didn't have an extensive conversation, but started to ask questions about athletic fees and things of that nature.
Right.
None of that is in the budget, but those are conversations that would be had moving forward.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's, again, just exactly as Sheriff Moscow mentioned earlier, none of these tuition, potential tuition increases or increases in rental, none of that drove anything in this budget. That's all separate, and I think, in all honesty, we were purposeful with that, because we want to be thoughtful in our process.
Sure.
So, but these are all discussions, again, that are down these different holes that we need to talk about.
Right. So we're all being accountable for those holes as well, is that?
Yeah, I think so.
No, but that was at that point. I don't want to get lost either.
No, that's a big nut that we have to crack after the budget.
Soften the budget, I-
And I think we all agree on the outside.
Yep.
There was enough in the recommendations from the auditor, and they showed us and told us to auditors, right? And they showed us where to go, where to start, and you've already had some input with the FinCom group and the rest of the commu- I mean, committee. So Susan, do you have any thoughts? Nicole, Lynn? I think based on where we were, and where we are, my only concern is, I'm, I'm uncomfortable for Lancaster. I'm really uncomfortable for Lancaster. I'm also really uncomfortable to, in these communities, to, to reduce the program that we currently, I mean, you know, fifty thousand foot educational program that we currently have. I, I know, I, I wish we were a year, we had, this was our second year, because if this were our second year, I think we would be finding even more efficiencies, and that, that, you know, and that money could be used either to reduce the assessments, or to bring in those programs that you're talking about that you want to do next year. But that, that, that's kind of a barbell. Neil doesn't agree?
No, I, 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 I agree with you, but I don't know if there's this magic pot of gold that's sitting in there that's going to be realized through these efficiencies.
Well, no, no, no.
I'd love it if there were.
There is no magic pot of gold, but we know that the efficiency, and when I say efficiency, I don't mean finding hundreds of thousands of dollars hiding in pockets somewhere. I mean the revolving accounts for the athletics, I mean, you know, some of the other things, some of the other topics that we've talked about, that we haven't really been able to get, I mean, we're just figuring out, we're just, you know, finally the layers of the yummy repeels back so we can actually see what it is we have in there, that's what I-
Yeah, so we talked about that today. We talked about there are, there are different, whatever you want to call them, cost centers, sub-organizations, whatever, athletics, technology, facility, you know, the, the whole rentals thing. And these are things that, just, they can't, they physically cannot be done in this period of time to get that. And so the next year, that, that will be the deep dives, the, it can merely be done in some digital things, right?
Right.
And then I think we can make a plan for E and D. And I think it needs to be a discussion that starts soon after this budget, and a plan is made for what the committee feels is necessary for a sustainable E and D amount, and makes a plan for any overages that are going to that account.
Well, and that is one of the goals of the finance subcommittee, is, is to have a point of view and recommendation for E and D, so.
But I think that's going to be, you know, we're going to require a lot of input from Pat, from the superintendent, because what is enough, and what's scary, and what's way more than we actually need, and how we get off that.
Yeah.
Well, that's the big thing right now.
But we need to make, you know, the hamster wheel.
Hamster wheel, oh, good.
But I think like anything, you need to make a multi-year plan. I mean, you may need to make a multi-year plan on how to do that. You can't just-
Yeah, no.
Absolutely.
You can't just pull trick here.
Well, and, and, and then similarly, the, the OPEB discussion, which, you know, we need to have that perspective from the gentleman and from the state that came and spoke with you.
Oh, Dr. Hammond, yeah, is that who you're talking about, Dr. Hammond, yeah?
Yeah, and that needs to be, I think that should be had at the full school committee level, so the school committee understands, but the community also starts to understand, what is OPEB, what's its impact? How do you fund it? When do you fund it? You know, I know that, you know, Bolton has, we've heard from officials in Bolton that you've got this massive, you know, outstanding multi, multi tens of millions of dollars worth of debt, but that's not necessarily a fair assessment, because that's looking at future value, and-
Fluctuates.
It does fluctuate, and we've seen it fluctuate wildly over the past-
Even the last year.
Couple of years, like, you know, ten thousand, ten million dollars.
I think it was ten million dollars between last year and this year.
Right.
But it's not going to come down to zero.
Well, no, I know what he expects it to, and we need to, you know, we said we were going to have a plan, so, you know, I think that's one of the upcoming in meetings is-
Well, and in all honesty too, I think that we've made some good steps forward, you know, with, with OPEB even in this budget, if you think about it, because we've got it included, first of all, we've got a line that's actually dedicated to OPEB, so it's not coming from anywhere else, it's there, it's very specific. You know, when we talk about OPEB obligations for things like extended day and such, those are conversations we've had. So those are all, so I think on the OPEB front, I think we've done some good work along those lines.
So are, are we considering the expense of OPEB in our programs? Are we including that?
Yeah, I think, Mark, I don't know if you want to speak to that, because we've had that discussion even earlier today too, or Neil?
I'd say the discussion is ongoing, but I'm not sure we landed in a particular location, but it's definitely-
Well, started.
Started.
That's good. All right, so if, are there any other questions about the budget? Because we, we do have it on the upcoming agenda, so if you want to take this, digest it, chuff it around.
So in the, in the town administrators' meetings that they are holding this week, this is what they're going to be going off of, you believe, when they talk, when they present the town budgets?
I mean, are you saying they'll use this for the plug numbers?
For the, for their plug numbers in their budget right now, yes, we've talked about it, yeah.
They've been provided.
Okay, okay, are we good? We're going to move on? Okay, the next agenda item, I'm going to tee it up and then turn it over to the finance subcommittee. In our last meeting, the administration brought forward, let me grab my pages, looking at three programs, actually, I'm going to let you tee it up.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to, so which one? This is, we'll talk about the three, the three programs that we had talked about were the extended day, the K, and the pre-K. And the, the bottom line is that, again, as we took a look and started putting all of the salaries, for example, that all belonged, for example, with extended day, into extended day, and we started seeing different pictures as we started looking at it, and so we said, "Wait, wait a minute, you know what? This, this is not a cost neutral program." Now, for the record, I don't feel that we have to be cost neutral in everything. And, you know, the, the K is a perfect example of that. I, I think that we need to look at, at K differently, and I think we need to look at it differently over the course of the next year to two years. So I want to put that out on the table tonight too, and we can talk about that in a few minutes. The, the pre-K, I think we, we also need to look a little bit differently on how we're offering pre-K. Right now, the notion, you know, and, and the interlinkage of the SED, which is really what drives our public school pre-Ks, the number of SED kids versus the, what we call role model children in pre-K, and how that interlinks, and the cost of that. And we think that, in talking to Joan De Angelis, who is helping us to guide this, we think that we can probably look to eight, probably nineteen and twenty. Not, I don't think we can do much for eighteen school year, but nineteen and twenty, I think we can look a little bit differently at that, and how it's offered in, in terms of instructional delivery. So that's, so the pre-K program, I, I see is kind of remaining the same for at least the, the year eighteen. It's nineteen and twenty that we'll probably try to look at making some shifts. So that, that program too, right now, I know that you'll, you'll see, and we had some discussion about teeing up a possible tuition increase in that. The K, and by the way, I want to also put on the table, and, and I know that I've done it before, but I'll do it again. This is just our suggestion, our recommendation. If you, as a committee, decide that you want to table some of these, or disagree, then we, we certainly respect that and understand that. The extended day, I think when we laid that out, and we'll take a look at that, I think Pat will hand that out shortly too, of what we did with the extended day, it's, we're, I feel that we're looking at a relatively minimal increase to help get us to pretty much a cost neutral zone. So I don't, the, the extended day to me, to me seems like the, the easier one of the three. The K, I really think, and I had spoken several weeks ago to Chairman Moscow about this, I really think that we need to take a look, at one point in time, it was looked at, the full day K was looked at as a potential free full day K. At some point in time, that, that, I believe that still needs to happen, we should look at that. We have started some preliminary work, actually, speaking of Dr. Hammond, we actually spoke with him the other day about it, and said, "What, what could this look like? What will this cost?" As I know Pat's already done some preliminary work, so that we know, again, we can't, we're in no position to do anything this year, but what does this look like moving forward? What's, what's the potential cost of the district? What will this look like for the October first numbers? Because that's really what, what helps to, to draw in the chapter seventy. So those are all things that we have to look at for the K. It's, it's a much bigger picture. So I think the extended day might be where we want to start, so I think I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darcy and Mr. Jones. If you can, I don't know if I've teed it up well enough, or if you'd like to spring from that, and certainly Pat's got sheets to hand out when you're ready.
That's, that's fine, so I think Pat did hand out.
I did hand out the extended day. Yeah, they're right there.
Thank you.
So last time we were talking, we were looking at program costs and so forth at nine hundred ten thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars, and I know Brooke and Pat were talking, that they went back and just talked a little bit about some cost efficiencies and so forth, and they were able to realize some cost efficiencies on this, and they've got the costs at eight eleven, eight eighty as you can see. And that's actually, it works out pretty good, because we're looking at if we, like, the, a true revenue neutral program, or a net neutral program, would be last week, I think it was twenty-two forty, is what we're looking at, which was a jump vote roughly about eight dollars and forty cents. The way that this would work now, we're looking at it at eighteen dollars and thirteen cents is true neutrality at that point in time. The recommended increase, which was ironically a fairly arbitrary figure of eighteen dollars last time, is the recommended increase that's still being made by the administration, and the finance subcommittee took a vote today to recommend, you know, going with the, the neutral number. The rationale, this is not an academic program. This is a complete outside program that should be self-funded, and we were subsidizing it through the, the district itself. And so that one itself, we would be looking to make a recommendation of.
So, so the recommendation-
Eighteen, eighteen dollars per day.
And thank you so much for, for doing this, because I know that it's not a fun thing to do, but, so the recommendation is to take the administrations, to adopt the administration's recommendation of moving the daily rate from thirteen dollars and eighty cents to eighteen dollars and thirteen cents?
Thirteen cents or eighteen dollars, wherever it is.
No, I want to, I want to clarify it.
I mean, if it's eighteen, we, we didn't actually have the specific figure at that point in time, but if we're looking for true neutral, it would be eighteen thirteen.
So you're looking, so, so, so you're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with either one, if the, the school committee personally.
How about the other two finance folks before we open it up to the other folks?
I wasn't able to make the meeting, so.
Well, how do you feel about now?
I think eighteen, I mean, I think eighteen thirteen is just an awkward number. I think eighteen, it leaves you, what, five thousand dollars? Less than, yeah, about five, five thousand, fifty, two hundred dollars. I don't think that's going to break a, a budget. And I think if you start telling people it's eighteen thirteen, it just, it gives the wrong impression, I guess, maybe, is that you're, you're, I like the eighteen.
So you are in favor of the increase?
Yes, no, I think it definitely should be at least as neutral, because it is, it's a, it's a service, not a right, I guess, is my opinion.
Okay. And Mark?
Yes, I, with Neil this morning, we agreed, we, we recommended cost neutral. We didn't actually know what that number would be, whether it would be twenty-two, or twenty, or whatever, and so, given that eight thirteen, eighteen thirteen, and eighteen are so close, I'm tempted even to, eighteen is close enough to neutral to make it flow some vote.
Okay, so we're talking just about extended day right now. We're going to go back to the other two programs in a minute. I want to hear from Neil, Lynn, I do that all the time. It's dyslexia, thank you very much, Neil, Lynn, okay? Thanks, now everybody knows, but go ahead.
To Susan's point, did you actually look at the program itself to see how it was structured? To see, because this isn't even making, I mean, we need eight eleven to make a cost neutral, and we're actually coming up with seven twenty-nine. We're still putting-
So this is, if we come down to eight oh six, with the eighteen dollars.
Okay, so while they're figuring that out, Nicole, Susan, Susan?
Is there still something?
What about the before-school?
See, he hasn't spoken to that yet. And that's exactly why the confusion is over here. Neil, do you want to talk about the before-school students, the five dollars versus the six dollar proposed, and how that?
Yes, sure. So, okay, so I'll take you right down the whole chart.
Sure.
So the eighteen-dollar recommended increase, if you follow it, it will generate a projective, total projected revenue of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Again, the current cost is eight hundred eleven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. And then if we add in the morning revenues with six-dollar proposed increase, one-dollar proposed increase from five to six dollars, that would generate seventy-seven thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Those two together come out to eight hundred six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. And we'll also say that when this program was initially put in place, this should have been always a revenue-neutral program. It wasn't last year. We went through, we jumped through hoops and everything, trying to get the numbers, trying to understand where everything worked with this program. This has been something that we've been trying to take care of now for going on two years. And now we finally have those numbers. But just with that conversation that we're having, and it's not, this does not subsidize, the costs here don't subsidize any education. But by the district paying for it, it takes away from the education of the district. So this is completely different from the pre-K K conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Can I ask a question about the before-school? So it's ninety-two students, right? At six dollars a student terms, a hundred and eighty days.
Well, it's not every, not every kid goes every day.
That's with what the current usage is.
Right. Good catch.
So, did you ever take a look to see what the actual program does? And do they actually need everything that they're saying they need?
So basically, we kind of went off of what you and Kathy had spoken about at the last meeting, and we went back, and Neil's, like, you don't have the sheet in front of you, but we actually reduced the cost in three different areas of that. So that you know that, yes, we did do that and go back and take a look to have it not quite as rich.
And to answer the question that Kathy and Lynn both had, what were the additional costs for summer vacations? And this eight eleven represents the all-in cost.
That's the benefit, yeah.
So are you going to be saying this is your budget?
Yes, that's, that's basically the approach that we're going to take.
I can say, I appreciate that that neutral rate was brought down to, like Neil had said, brought down to the eighteen thirteen from over twenty. I think that that's, I feel much more comfortable now.
We do.
Yeah, it was twenty-two forty, is what, is what that originally was.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you for saying that.
So just to be clear, this is totally cost recovery? No money from our budget is going to go to subsidize this in any way, shape, or form? Is that correct?
That's exactly what we came for.
Plus or minus a thousand or two dollars.
No, 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 zero, no.
Okay, okay, we're talking about the thirteen cent.
No, I'm serious. I'm dead serious, and it may seem to be splitting hairs. But one of the things that, you know, I struggled with around this, and it, sometimes it takes me a while to realize certain things. And one of the things is that school districts do not run extended-day programs through their budget, even if it's cost-neutral. In most school systems, it is an independent contractor that comes in and rents space from the school to do it. And in other school districts, it's another subsidiary of a town, like Community Education, or Parks and Rec, something like that. So I'm, I am, and this is not the decision today, but moving forward, maybe we need to start looking at something like this. Because it troubles me, and Neil brought it up before, that we have been subsidizing this for years, and we weren't even aware of it. And talk about, you know, what you spoke to about the budget and being, you know, cutting it to the bone. And, you know, so if money was being leached away to subsidize this, that's troubling. So I think, moving forward, we need to think about whether this is a business we want to be in. It's totally different than school lunch, which is also a cost recovery. So we have to think about that seriously. But the only way that I would vote to approve this is if not one cent of the district budget went to subsidize in any way, shape, or form.
I think that that's a tall order. I hear what you're saying, but I'm gonna, and I respect what you're saying a hundred percent. I really, really do. And I'm not disagreeing with you in terms of, are there a lot of districts that run this separately? You're absolutely right. And like I said, Parks and Rec came out of my mouth right away, because I know that very often.
That's right.
However, I would also say that, you know, I'm aware of many school districts that operate it like we do. I just think that, and I'm going to go down two different roads here. I just think that right now, given the situation that we've been given, I'm comfortable with moving it forward as it is. But I'm going to put a caveat on there, because I think Mr. Darcy had kind of started to go down a road a little bit, but I'm going to go down the road further, and that would be in terms of not necessarily knowing some things. And you'll recall that one of the positions that you put in place this year was that position between food services and extended day. So that there's somebody that's doing the accounting and billing and all that kind of thing. That person's only been in place for, what, two months, maybe? Not even? And so we're just now starting to see some things that we hadn't seen, we hadn't seen before. I'm incredibly nervous about making a blanket statement promising that nothing will go, maybe the year after, but this year, there are too many unknowns right now. This is our best, very best, I don't want to say guess, because it's not a guess. We've done so much work on this. But it's a very best notion that we can put forward right now of where we're at. So I hear what you're saying, and I so respect what you're saying. I absolutely understand it. But I don't feel at all that I can make a promise that not one cent will go forward.
Are you saying it's because, you're basing this on, this is all you know that's earmarked in the budget for these programs, but what you don't know is there's something else in the budget?
Is there something else I don't know about?
But I think what Kathy, I want to put, I'm going to put words in your mouth, and you can tell me yes or no, because I just want to make sure that these, I think you guys aren't that far apart. Are you saying what you know needs to be neutral? Because Kathy, you can't possibly, I can't imagine that you could possibly, and I know you well enough to know, that you wouldn't say, so create some other number that could be there, but that's reasonable.
No, I think what I'm getting at is that, this is, people, we're asked to live within a budget. Look at the work you did to cut and cut and cut and cut to get us where we are, and it's still not enough. I think it's personally perfectly reasonable to expect any director of any program to be given a budget and told you have to live within the budget.
I totally agree with that.
The other point I want to make is this. So if we had to hire somebody to help out food services and extended day with the budget, and perfectly legitimate expense, but the cost of that employee should come out of these programs. It should not be in addition to, because it's hired expressly for them.
Yeah.
Their cost recovery, so just as salaries would come out of the revenues that they generate, we would, should be charging that person's salary to, between those accounts. That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at. And it's just that maybe I'm so emotional, because feeling duped for all those years, that we were told it was cost recovery, and I remember sitting here last year and asking and asking, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, oh, no, Kathy, not so. And it just is, something like an extended-day program is market-driven. Because if this did not exist here.
Right, something else.
People would find other entities to provide this service for them. So for us to take money from our budget to support something that parents would pay for anyway, it's a real, real problem. And so I wanted to know that consciously, that if the, if the cost-neutral is eight hundred eleven thousand nine thirty-five, and we tell the director that's the budget, that that's where it goes, and nothing.
No, I get that. I totally get.
You're right. We're closer.
Yeah, you are. You're closer than, right.
No, to that end, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
And I don't mind charging parents or asking parents to pay, because if we didn't have it there, they'd have to pay someplace else.
What, I have a couple, I have questions, but I want Nicole to get a chance to say something. You have any thoughts on this?
I absolutely agree with Kathy. The, the one thing that we just have to think about, I don't know if it should necessarily weigh on our decision, but there are other options in store. You know, there's a school on Bette Garode that the bus goes right past and drops kids off. We don't have stepping stones any longer, but, you know, what is it, what is that going to do to the population inside of the extended day? And again, I don't know if that should necessarily affect our decision, because we are not in the business of daycare. But it is something to think about, that no matter what we do, there are people who can hire a nanny for eighteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, and have them come pick them up at school and take them home. So, but I would like to vote for the eighteen dollars and thirteen cents, just because that's, again, what Kathy said. That's what we know right now, and that's what I would like to.
So I have a couple of.
Fincom addressed that, though. Fincom does address the question that Nicole had today.
What question?
Like, well, basically, what's going to happen? If there's, if we have a sudden drop in enrollment and so forth, and administration told us that it is fluid, and that they're able to make adjustments based on that.
Well, that would be one of the questions, is could you mid-cycle? Could you adjust where you needed to in order, because, you know, it's not a classroom, right?
That's exactly, that's exactly what we said.
Right. So I have a couple of questions. So I'm going to be the parent, because my kids were in a program like this. So I'm going to go back there. At what point have parents, I can't remember when the commitment is that they need in order to get their kids into the next year's cycle with wherever it is? Is the commitment, I don't know, Pat, do you?
I think it's an equal.
Okay, all right. As long as, because what I don't want to happen is like, you know, this is just an analogy, but summer camps. Like, you've got to be in a summer camp by the beginning of March, or you're never going to get into a summer camp. Like, I don't want to lock people out and their options are gone. So as long as we're not doing that, then I'm okay with this. And I'm with Kathy and Nicole, mostly because that money should go into the schools and into the programs that we need. This district and these towns deserve the very best that we can give them, and I think we have more. Susan?
I just have a question about the future. So if it's, if it's a, you know, revenue-neutral program from here on out, whose decision would it be in the future to raise the rate and change the budget? Or, you know, like, does that still fall under our responsibility?
We had actually had that discussion. I think it's a great question, because we'd had the discussion. I think each one of these could be reviewed every year at budget time, to be honest with you. To take a look at where, if we've hit it on the mark or not, and for the administration to come forward and say, yes, you know what? This absolutely didn't work, or this worked perfectly, or we can reduce it, or whatever. I think it should be visited yearly.
We talked last school committee meeting about making this a policy.
It's in the meeting minutes, yeah.
We did, but that was before we committed to, well, not that we've committed yet, but it seems like maybe that might be.
No, I think what we said was, regardless of what came out of this, every year, these three programs need to be reviewed. Absolutely. Because, because of the fluidity in the programs, right? Until we decide what's going to happen with K.
I guess they see this as different than the pre-K and K.
It definitely is.
Yeah. Kathy?
Is there a point at which the district may decide to get out of the daycare business? And decide to go a different route, and either, you know, see what is available for the towns, or someone who works in the town looking to expand into a school? I just, it just makes me nervous that this is a business that we're in, that we, we've got enough plates and spinning above our heads.
That's interesting. I didn't even consider it.
And it's not a decision for today. But I just want to put it on the table, that if it makes life simpler, and you have, and maybe we need to study what other districts do, take a look at it, what are the pluses, the minuses? But it just seemed that this was too easy to get, it got a, I'll use the word, to hide from us.
It is a convenience to the parents. It is a value to the parents that use it. It's a relief to the parents that use it. But that doesn't mean that in its current format, which we did not have visibility into, that it, that it needs, that it shouldn't change, because I think that's what this is, right? I mean, targeting a dollar number instead of, you know, free-floating programs that just proliferate, that aren't used in the classroom, and then not recovering the cost of it, is not responsible.
Well, it takes away from the district.
Right, that's my point. It's not responsible.
It's not, yeah.
Lynn?
I'm just going to change a little bit. We are no longer calling this enrichment, so does that mean we now no longer have enrichment?
No, it is. We, yeah, no, we still use the word enrichment. There's an enrichment.
But this isn't really enrichment.
But there's an enrichment component to the program. It's just not on this sheet, but it has been on your previous sheets.
But it doesn't translate into the classrooms? Only the children that go to this get whatever this is? So this is not enrichment?
Well, you know what? Now we're, it's word choice now.
No, I want enrichment.
Okay, but we're talking about extended day. That's what this is. This is after-school and before-school.
Yeah, and the term enrichment is used in there, and it is. And in fact, it's a little piece of the budget line that actually says enrichment. If I want to say six thousand dollars, I think is in that budget line.
And where does that go? Here?
Yeah, you've got a synoptic here, but the greater detail.
So would that, would that six thousand dollars be included in this?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's comfortable with the recommendation from the finance subcommittee.
So are we doing eighteen thirteen?
We're going to need to make a motion.
Yeah, but, yeah, we will. But what, so does somebody want to make a motion?
Actually, you have a thought before a motion. One way to satisfy your concerns about not one dollar coming out of the general fund. That last penny. Is for us to have a policy that the program resides completely and entirely inside the revolving fund. If it has a loss or a surplus in any year, that resides in the revolving fund.
That may be a really good way to approach it.
And that's the way that you can get your assurance that it doesn't affect the general fund. And we could, as a practice this year, without having a policy in place, say, that's how it's going to be run. And that might satisfy a particular concern, and then we just need to get a good policy brought forward, so everyone understands how it's going to be run.
I actually really like that.
And I think that would satisfy everybody in the room that way.
Can you draft something with policy?
Could we take that one step further, and actually make a motion that the establishment of a revolving fund for the program is made for this?
Well, there is an existing revolving fund, so it's just we're continuing to use it.
Would we continue to use that within the?
And I don't think we need policy for that. I think we can do that. We already have it, yeah.
Okay, so does someone, we're going to go back, girls, or some, girls, ladies. Somebody want to make a motion?
So I'll move that we have a standard rate for this particular program of eighteen dollars a day, and that it resides entirely within the revolving fund in terms of its use of the facilities and benefits and so forth. This will be your eighteen.
Okay.
And with the intent, basically, that it be run effectively as a cost-neutral.
Standalone.
Standalone. It's a long motion.
Kathy?
It's a motion, but wait a second. I need a second before, yeah. Okay, thanks, Jennifer, second, and Alina. Kathy?
Okay, so at eighteen dollars, that rate, it can be. Okay, so at eighteen dollars, that rate, it can be cost-neutral?
No.
You'll lose a little money. There's there's a lot of money in that revolving fund right now. It's in hundreds of thousands. So it's not a problem if it loses a few thousand dollars in a year.
But it won't come out of the budget.
But it won't come out of the general fund. It's its own, it's its own revolving fund.
What are you gonna do with that money that's already part of it?
All I'm saying is if that's part of the motion, if there's money in the revolving account to offset all the thirteen cents that will not be part of it.
Yeah.
Then I want assurances that is what is going to happen.
And that's exactly what you're hearing.
That's exactly what you're hearing.
So there's about seventy thousand.
Now, I assumed in the motion it would have to be another motion.
Did he say?
Yeah.
It's in the motion, so they're fine.
Okay.
Okay, any other open discussion? No? You ready? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you for all the work you guys did on this.
Yeah, great work. Um, we need to now go back and look at pre-K.
Wait, the five dollar to six dollar.
Oh, for lord's sake, we gotta.
Oh, you're right, Donna.
Oh, we gotta.
I will move that we uh increase the before-school fee from five dollars to six dollars.
Second.
Do I include this?
Do we need to talk about this as?
It's gonna, oh, correct, yeah, as the part of the revolving fund.
As a part of the previously.
As a.
Part of the previously moved revolving fund.
Okay. Wow. So that was Jennifer and Neil second, and it has, wow, is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, thank you, guys. Let's let's go to K next.
Can I?
Of course you can.
I I just wanna put on the table, we had put we put this on the table last time, and I I just wanna put it on the table again. One of the concerns I have with um with putting increases in all of these lines, uh, all of these programs, the extended day K and pre-K. And we've had this discussion, but I wanna put it on the table again. My, one of my biggest concerns is that if we do all three, this has a substantial impact to our young families. And, you know, it struck me again the other day as I met a mom outside the the door here, and she had her little um kindergarten child with her, and she'd mentioned that she was coming in to pick up her pre-K. And I thought, there's a family that would be hit potentially by all three increases. And so again, I I would put on the table that, you know, we had looked, you you had spoken about the notion of, you know, with again, can we be as cost-neutral, cost-neutral as we can? But I also wanna put on the table that it's your option to also table this. Um, if 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 you would like to do that as well, because I I do have concerns, and I know that we all do, because we've all talked about this, the notion of increasing all three of these. For me, the priority was the extended day to try to make sure, and for all the right reasons that have come around the table, I too see extended day over here as separate. I I see the interlinkage, though, Lynn. I do see the enrichment possibilities and and the opportunities that are there, but I see it as a separate entity. K and pre-K, I see, and again, very differently, both programs serve different needs. But I I just want us to, and I know that we are all thinking that, but I wanna put it on the table again, so.
So are we talking pre-K, cause you just.
I would say K.
No, I'm getting it right now.
All right.
Do you have a recommendation?
Honestly. I think it depends on what side, it's gonna sound like I'm gonna sit on both sides of the fence, and I'm not, but if you wanted to be more cost-neutral, you would raise it, if that's, if that was the goal. But I really think with the notion of looking ahead and trying to find our way to get to pre-K uh in the next couple of years, I don't know that this is the route that you necessarily want to go down. Having said that, though, the the pre-K discussion is also gonna be about a philosophical discussion for our communities. And I'm not sure that philosophically, all of our communities are going to agree with what what is entailed and state the state's expectation around pre-K. So I, this is a bigger discussion, and I also wanna put on the table, too, because none of these are budget drivers. Because we've done the budget as such, none of these are involved. You don't have to feel rushed on any of these decisions. The extended day I felt strongly about because I wanted to make sure that parents had a heads up, and I knew that that was one that we really had to, I felt, raise. The pre-K and K, the pre-K, to be honest with you, I'm I'm leaning more towards, I would like to do something with pre-K. The K is the one that I'm kinda sitting the fence on a bit more, because I really think we wanna look at that through different plans with time over the course of the next couple of months. So I mean, even the pre, even the K, if you wanted to set set that back and say, look, let's have some discussion in another two months, for example, on this, because it's not, it's not a driver in our budget. We can do that, like, we can do whatever you wanna do with these these remaining two.
So where does the finance subcommittee?
I want a clarification just for a second. So when you talk about pre-K, it's full day?
Yes.
There would be no half-day on it?
And that's my issue.
That's why I'm saying, I, the state has certain expectations, because it's included in that October first count. And so the I, that's why I say it's a bigger discussion than sitting here tonight and talking about it.
Yeah, it's a community, right, it's a community discussion.
Well, it's a, I looked at some numbers that we got a couple of years ago when we, remember when we first went to the blended classrooms? And the ma- the majority of parents who took this kinda kinda loose survey in Bolton and Lancaster wanted their kids in a full-day program, but there were still, like in Bolton, a third of the parents wanted their kids in a in a half-day program. I can't remember what it was, I can't remember what it was in Stowe, I mean Lancaster, but in Stowe, it was the majority of kids, like, they had the largest number of kids K-aged. And it was split almost immediately down the middle with half of them wanted full, half of them wanted half-day. And I don't know if those of us who were here at the time, there were a lot of parents that came in who wanted half-day and didn't want that option taken away. My concern is, I'm not an educator, I'm not making an excuse, I'm just a parent. I don't believe that every child is ready to be in class full-time when they're five. And I also don't like the idea that they're structured so much from such a young age. You know, I don't wanna take that right away.
Yeah.
So that's my issue with all this.
And you and I talked about this earlier. My kids were still having naps at that point in time. You know, those are all things you need to think about as a parent, and we need to think about as a collective community.
Right, so so we're.
And they're at school for so many years.
I know. And we've, and and you know, and the expectations, some, for some kids, those expectations, they're right there, and that's cool. But for some kids, they're so not ready for it, and like, let's talk about anxiety inducing, right? But Neil, where was the finance subcommittee on this?
All over the board. This is the one we're not coming forward with a with a voted consensus opinion on. So I'll share a few things, and then Mark will have some words, I'm sure, to to add. You know, there's there's sort of two, it's a philosophical, and there's a two dynamics that are working here. I personally agree with Brooke that we're going into a year where there's gonna be a question mark, do we want the kindergarten, do we not? So I'm really hesitant to, you know, some sort of cost recovery, which I don't necessarily believe in with the the kindergarten either personally. But that approach, and, you know, strap extra hundreds of dollars and all this stuff, and then turn around the next year and say, oh, guess what? You got burned over, but this group now gets it free, you know? And that, I I just don't see there's, to me, it's just not cool. And and I paid for my kids to go through, so I'm one of the people that paid, and I understand the pre-K K burden and all that stuff. You know, that said, there's also, well. Everything goes up, taxes, you know, I mean, just everything, every year, because we issue cost of living increases. And so the idea that perhaps the tuition adjusts by the the differential in just the simple costs is another, and given the second perspective, is another perspective of covering that that small difference, whatever that that may be. And I don't know if you guys even have numbers at this point in time specifically for that.
Don't know whether we had the time.
Yeah, no, cause this was something that that came up today, but I mean, those are essentially the two different sides of of the conversation, and Mark, please, anything?
Do you have anything to add?
Um, sure. My view is, it's been a few years since there's been rate setting on this, and salaries, insurance, healthcare has gone up, and I think it's reasonable to increase the rates ten percent. That would be three hundred dollars a year, thirty dollars a month, and just is keeping the same program, allowing it to run in place in terms of its expenses. So it's not really shifting radically the perspective, giving us time to really take a look at what do we wanna do, so that that's my point here.
Let me ask a question. What was the in, what? What is the the COLA and what is the percentage of increase on benefits?
For how many years?
For which which years?
For this, from this year to next year.
Twelve percent for benefits, roughly. Twelve percent.
So.
And the COLA?
Who don't?
For previous years.
Previous years, we can't say for now because we're in a negotiation here.
So even that is less, even that is more than what you just said, yes.
It is, right.
And and that was the point, that which is why we had such differing discussions today on it.
So so. I'm more in Neil's, I'm in Neil's camp, but I'm, I like to play devil's advocate. You're the devil right now. Sorry, babe.
I do my advocate.
Yeah. You have an advocate. But I I I'm with Neil. I I don't wanna do this, especially because to Superintendent's point, we're looking at a very significant shift in possibly looking at full-day kindergarten. But I, again, I wanna make sure that those little halftime people are.
Yeah.
But still, we have an obligation in the increase in the healthcare and the raises that people get. So at a minimum, when an organization, when a daycare, when a provider looks at next year's rates, that's what they look at.
Right.
Right.
Right, and so to be fair, I'm not, I would rather see nothing, but I also see the logic just exactly the way that you're talking about there. Again, we're we're absorbing more and more.
Yeah.
By not passing through just the normal expenses that would come through, right? Or even a modicum of it of an increase, we're absorbing more, or, you know, as far as the district goes.
And what Mark just recommended is actually less than the rate of inflation in the benefits that we offer and the and the salary increases.
Well, and I think the other thing you need to think about is the last time, uh, past, last time that there was an increase in K was what, four years ago or so?
I believe it was four years ago.
So if you think about four years worth of not doing anything, I mean, you're you're talking twelve percent, but.
That's for one year, twelve percent, although we had, of course, a four, substantial difference.
Right. So what, I don't, I'm not an actuary, but. So, all right, Nicole, help, help jump in, have an opinion, please.
I do. Um, I agree with Mark that uh an an increase year over year makes perfect sense, because the things have increased. However, it can't happen this year. The the numbers have already gone out to the parents that are deciding if they're gonna put their kids in full K or half K. And those are the numbers that the um that the district is deciding on their staffing right now.
So the, so the notice has gone out?
Yeah, has.
I didn't think that it did, actually, but.
Well, aren't aren't you getting registr, like, people saying they're coming for kindergarten, they're coming for full?
This is a rate that's been put out.
Oh, I didn't know that the rate has been put out, but okay.
Oh, that's.
Well, this is last year's rate.
Right, and they, and it's, I think there's a disclaimer that it's it's subject to change if.
And when did that go out?
I think it's part of the registration.
Process.
Process.
And when does that happen? I I just need to know.
That happens, it's ongoing, it's happening now.
March, no, the letter went out in December.
It was in December?
Yes, it was December.
You have to return it Christmas week. You have to determine, you have to return before vacation.
So nothing's changed, if we change them.
Well, I mean, we're gonna throw people into a tiz, too, if we've already, okay, so Nicole.
Sure, we haven't promised it, and there's disclaimer that says, but this is what people are planning on.
Susan?
Um, I I I agree with all three, actually. Uh, I I think, given the fact that the discussion will take place soon for the free K, that it seems a bit unfair to to boost it up. I understand that the ten percent, but again, it's not, it, just because the rates haven't gone up in the past four years, it, you know, that's not the burden of next year's kindergarten family. That was, that was a fee that was set by the district for four, it was, you know, it it kind of falls on us, right? That didn't go at that rate.
But he's not proposing to put all four years.
I understand, I, yeah, right.
Just that was significant than what it actually was.
Kathy?
We haven't talked about preschool yet, right?
No.
Okay, good.
It's just K.
No, I I think that, again, I I talk about market forces and what is market-driven, and like everybody has pointed out, nothing stays the same when factors that comprise that are changing, so healthcare's gone up, salary's gone up. I think it's reasonable to expect that that get passed along in some way, shape, or form. You know, I I agree with Brooke that I see the the kindergarten as sort of like a a different cat in in this regard, especially if we wanna move towards a a different model. But again, my my theme tonight is concern about subsidizing something for some and and not others. So I would be in favor of 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 an increase, just to keep with the types of things that we have um had to account for, healthcare and salaries, and um, you know, start working on what we're gonna do about about kindergarten.
Okay.
Okay, there's another aspect that people need to consider, too. If we don't do an increase, and I'm just, I'm covering both sides of the, if we don't do an increase this year, we put it out for free kindergarten next year at the conversation, and it gets shot down. Then we have to, in order to bring it forward, it's going to be crazy increases, because again, this way that we're going, E and D is getting used up, I mean, we are in a crunch, and it's gonna have to be done. And those those costs are gonna be passed on at at just, I think, a minimum rate.
And then, you know, the other option is, don't offer. Just have your half-day kindergarten. Don't get into the money mire with regard to this. You mean, you're meeting a a need that people have expressed, they want, some people want full-day K, and they pay for it, but if we are subsidizing a portion of it, then maybe the easiest solution, not next year, but but thinking ahead, is just our kindergarten program is half-day. Done.
Is there a sped requirement? To offer half to a full-day for?
No, it's 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 very different than pre-K, if if that's what you're thinking, the pre-K is.
Well, I was just wondering if the state requires you to offer full-day to kindergarteners on a on an IEP.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, I, my first reaction is yes, to be honest with you.
That's what I thought, too. So I think you're gonna be offering it anyways for the sped kids.
Well, I think we look at that and see, but I'm just saying that.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
We're we're we've been in a position like we were with extended day, we weren't charging enough, and the district ends up paying. And it's not like, like, I think there were fourteen kids that didn't register for full-day K. But the rest of the kids had a portion of their full-day K tuition underwritten by the district. What if those fourteen were offered that same amount to go? Would their parents have the other? It just seems inequitable. It is inequitable, it doesn't just seem that way.
And I and I do agree with Neil, too, like, my concern, too, is that, let's say we bring up the pre-K and across the three community, the free, free full-day K, and across the three communities, they all shoot it down, but then then what?
I hadn't even thought about that.
You know, and the the truth is, like, exponentially. You know, and the, the truth is, like, exponentially, like, if you look, since then we're at year six of not, like, potentially, of not having done any raised cost, and to your point, the, the district just continues to, you know, right now, we're sitting at about a $400,000 deficit as such, right? Well, that's the only way to increase, so, um, I think it's a, I think it's a valid point, and it, it's a concern I have too, because I don't know what they're all three communities, exactly what you were saying, Trevor and Moscow, I just don't know if all three communities will buy in.
So I still want to hear what other members have to say.
Of the 1 million, the program costs?
Mm-hmm.
How much would the, the district be paying anyway, because there are kids in sped? Do you have?
For?
You mean for the kindergarten or the preschool? The kindergarten.
The kindergarten.
But you're not going to recover that?
Right, um, I don't have any numbers on the sped kids that are enrolled.
Okay.
Because, um.
We, we can, yeah, I don't know, we can probably get back to you on a number of that.
I'm just, I'm curious.
There's, there are only a few?
Because the 10, there are only a.
Yeah, there are only a few, and that's the same issue with the pre-K, you know.
Pre-K numbers are really low.
Well, honestly, you know, part of the issue with the pre-K is that you've got, um, one sped and 10 role models, but you have to maintain for all of that, and so our pre-K programs are running highly inefficiently right now.
What?
So this is one, one of the ones that you want to, let us percolate, you think about for a while?
No, you had, you percolated on that sucker last time.
Well, I did, I was just, I, I thought I heard you say that. Do you mind if we put this one off? I was just wondering if you want.
That's a data trait.
And we want opinion, you got all the facts in front of you, unless there's something outrageously not missing here, and I don't mean that as a judgment.
Well, actually, I, I, I have an opinion, but it's, I was just wondering, because it's going to be in the paper, and people are going to start talking about it now, because now there's talk of maybe there's a free K, maybe there is a free K, maybe the price is going to go up, maybe it's not going to go up, the letters have already gone up, or we're going to be upset about it. So it might change, like, if people are coming in as full day kindergarten and the price goes up, they might opt to go down to half-day.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, it's an option, so it might skew all the numbers.
Well.
Because there has not been a lot of talk about it outside of this.
Nicole?
Just because the tenor of this has changed, I just want it said, just, oh, this is the business of the district, it is, it is starting right here, it is starting at kindergarten. And we all know how important early intervention is to kids, and what that does to our costs later on. And if we have these kids this, this year, and we're able to, to acclimate them to a classroom environment, and, and to sit in a circle and be part of a, of a community, everything that kindergarten provides you, we will spend less money later on, and this is where we should be investing our money.
Doesn't it remind you of the, everything I ever needed to know I learned in kindergarten?
Why'd you teach that?
All right, guys, what do you want to do with this program?
Something we could do is set it aside for the moment, talk about pre-kindergarten, and then maybe bring, bring it up for discussion on Wednesday.
You know what, you know something, Mark, here's the thing, uh, you know, that, if the vote doesn't need to be taken tonight, that's one thing, but kicking, I'm using your phrase, kicking the can down the road because we're afraid we want, oh, I mean, declare yourself, you've declared yourself.
Yeah.
You've declared yourself, well, no, you really haven't.
Actually, no, it needs to, it needs to go up. My, my point was just that maybe, I mean, the discussion about the pre-K and we were going, that's another discussion.
Yeah.
It's still about whether it's going to go up or not, and it's been four years, it needs to go up.
So Mark says it needs to go up, we don't know what it's going to go up by yet?
No.
Lynn says it needs to go up, Jennifer's saying?
I think it needs to go up, but it can't go up, it can't go up for the amount that really it needs to go up.
Well, I think, I kind of think I'm hearing that from anyone that said there needs to be a little increase. Neil?
Um, I think first of all, we're mislabeling this by saying that, that if you're paying 50 percent for a full day, because you're not, I mean, right now, we're subsidizing the second 50, that second half day, uh, at this point, so while we're not free kindergarten, we are free half-day, and we are a whatever, 0.2, 0.3 free on the second half of the day at, at this point in time. Uh, every year that there is no increase, that subsidized portion gets higher.
That's an argument for the pre, pre-K.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so it ends up, and I think Nicole's statement was a great argument for free full day.
That's something, if we're already subsidizing.
That's what Kathy said the last time.
Right, but that's, but that's where, that's where it's going, so again, you go back to my mind, you still go back to the philosophical thought, are you going to do free K, are you going to do that? So right now, if the conversation's going forward, I'm, at this point in time, not for any increase for kindergarten.
Okay, Nicole?
Not this year.
And Susan? I know, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what Mark is saying, but, but it bothers me that some parents may, may have not really found kindness there.
But, but does the decision have to be, has the.
If the decision had to be made.
Had the decision needed to be made at this point?
No.
No, okay.
They have not committed, they've not, they've not given any money yet.
Yeah, um, so the form, and, and double check, Susan, has a deposit on it, and the form said non-refundable deposit, um, but under chapter 70 funding, that deposit has to be refundable, so if somebody changes their mind, they can get their $50 back, the form was.
So, so you know what, my question, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
But, but so there was money committed, but they get it back. To be in compliance with the grant that we received from the state, they need to get that money back if they change their mind. Go ahead.
Okay, so do the parents, did they already have to give their I'm going or I'm not going in a deposit?
You already had to select full day or half day.
So that deadline's done.
But you can change your mind, so I personally selected half-day because I wanted to know how this was going to pan out, because I was told I can change my mind at any time.
Okay, so it's the end of February, okay, so.
I'm fine with the, I, I do have to decide, I mean, I, I would need to know what the percentage is.
Right, but this, the question on the table is any increase, the degree is a different discussion.
Okay. Well, if the degree's too high, then I'm against an increase, that's the thing.
So what, what Mark has said was a 10 percent increase, so we know that nobody's going to want to go higher than 10 percent. I think the question is, leave it where it is or some adjustment, and we'll figure, I'm just trying to, look, I'm just trying to figure out where everybody is. Kathy, we'll come back to this.
I think there has to be an adjustment.
Okay, so that leaves you and me.
I guess it does.
You, see, I, ugh, I don't want to do this for all the reasons that you said it, and what Neil said, um, but what scares me is what Neil said, which is, if we don't do this, and then next year, it doesn't pass, and we're going to have new people on the board next year, right, so we get, Jennifer's taking off, Nicole's going to live in Disney, so, um, this could flip on its head, and then what, then?
You could have 60 percent increase for somebody.
Exactly, so I don't want to increase, I don't want to cost-recover this program, but I do think that like any program, no matter where you go, we need to address the rate of inflation at a minimum, not the cost of the program, but the rate of inflation on the insurance. And that's actually more than what Mark's recommending, so, and that means we've got six who are interested in some type of an increase, and two who say we don't want to increase at all, and I think before we make any type of vote, we need to think about a little bit more, and then we can come back on Wednesday.
I think it might make a difference depending on the amount, like, whether it is 10 percent or if that's, I, I, you know, you might get a different consensus even around the table tonight if you bring up an amount.
So 10 percent is.
Will you have time to run those numbers to figure that out between now and Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
Kathy?
So the sheet that we were given has a highlighted line.
Right.
That shows an increase, um, from 3100 dollars a year to 38, what was that predicated on?
That was just us trying to take a grad, a graduated step, because we knew that we couldn't get to cost recovery.
Okay.
Well, we felt we couldn't get to cost recovery.
Okay, and the, the FinCom did not have a recommendation?
They were not, they were not united.
I see.
Yeah, that's why you got such different opinions.
So 10 percent, so let's put this in perspective, somebody check my numbers, because I'm a, I'm a writer, not a numbers girl. Um, if the annual rate is 3100 and we go with a 10 percent increase, then it's a 3400, $10.
Yeah.
Call it 3400 for round numbers.
Oh, gosh, Kathy, you're not going to go for that?
And 13 cents.
And 13 cents. So we would be looking at, instead of 3100 a year, it's 3400 a year.
Which is less than the numbers that were projected out.
Which is much less.
Okay, one, one take up to, that's still, if my calculations come out correct, that's still less than the grant, the $60,000 grant we lost.
Right.
See, the other thing is, we lost a $60,000 grant for kindergarten this past year.
Oh.
Uh, the state, the state's pulled that back from everybody on us, so.
I thought that was only if it pulled it back, like, wasn't there a number, was it the 4800 that we, they had to charge to get to the point where we got the 60,000? There was, there was some rate of increase that would have, we would have gotten the 60,000 back, I thought.
No, they, no, this is.
That's gone.
The grant is gone.
Yeah.
This was, this really was a result of the, the new governor coming in, when Charlie Baker first came in, and this, he had very strong feelings about this.
Okay.
Okay, so are you comfortable thinking about coming back on Wednesday to discuss 3100 a year, moving to 3400 a year as consideration for next year's kindergarten?
I, I think that's reasonable. Yeah, we can discuss it next week, sure.
We can discuss it, you're not going to be here, are you?
No, I'm here.
No.
On Wednesday, yeah.
Well.
You keep wanting me to leave.
No, I don't, I can't remember when you go!
Is there anyone, just because we've got so much going on, is, is there anyone who feels that, like, so strongly that they can't do the vote now? I mean, are people feeling strong enough to take the vote now, or are we just kind of kicking it down to Wednesday, and it's going to be the same thing? But all I'm saying is, if we can get this off the table.
Does anyone think they'll change their mind by Wednesday?
Me, I want to, but that's only one person, so if the rest of you feel like.
I might.
You're what?
She might.
I know the preschool discussion shouldn't have an effect on this, but I don't know.
So you want more time or not?
Yes. Yes.
You want more time, so let's do it Wednesday. Alita, can you help me and put that on there Wednesday?
And is there particular information that people want to see for Wednesday that they don't feel like they've got a grip on right now?
I think maybe this next conversation that we're going to have is going to color some of our opinions.
Right, so let's, and we're running a little behind, so let's move right into the preschool.
We want to, we're going to do a 10 percent increase, but do you want to actually show what the 60,000 would be, you want to recover the 60,000 with Russian State?
No, I.
Yeah, I don't know if it makes that much difference, but we, we can do that.
Because I know that the 10 percent's pretty close.
I wasn't, and I didn't say that to suggest that we recover the 60, I was just.
Yeah, I don't think it's 10 percent we're looking at, I think we just talked about moving from 31 to 34.
Which is a little less than 10.
Okay, all right, so go ahead, we want to run and, or handle the preschool.
Well, actually, I probably, I'll, I think I kind of teed that up, so I think I'll turn this over to, to Mr. Darcy and Mr. Jones as well for the, the preschool rate increase proposal. Um, I think we had a good discussion on that today as well. I don't know that we disagreed philosophically on this one, like we did the K, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darcy and Mr. Jones.
Yeah, so, um, this, this one has a more substantial increase with it. Uh, the costs that administration has been giving us is 1.222756, um, uh, which is roughly $200,000 more than kindergarten. Um, their costs, if I'm understanding this correctly, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but total per pupil cost of 7235 includes the sped students, so it's the overall cost, so the 4667 is what is broken down for the, the regular ed, uh, students, and that's, that's the differential in that, and that's why that 72 is so high, uh, because it does include the, um, the sped costs in there. Um, so, that being said, the current, um, program that we are looking at here, uh, we have for two-day, the rate is 145, three-day, 217, four-day is 278, five-day is 668, um, and, uh, administration has proposed, and we voted actually, and, um, agreed on this, um, to, to just make that as a, an advisory to, uh, to the school committee. Uh, proposal number one, which would be, uh, bring the rates to 196 for a two-day, 291 for a three-day, 370 for a four-day, and 882 for a five-full day. I'm going to note that the two-day, three-day, and four-day are half-day only, and that's why there seems to be such a huge jump, five-day is full day. Um, and I will point out that what that does is that makes a difference of $120,000 in overall increased, um, revenue to the program, which brings it to 487,000. This is still, we're, we're not even discussing, I mean, the, the revenue neutral is not the conversation in this, in this at all.
I don't know how you get that.
Um, no, because I, 487 in the program still costs 1.2 plus million dollars that's in there, so, um, it, it, it's apples and oranges and, and everything else. Again, this is a situation where we've had, I believe it's a few solid years that there's been zero, um, increase whatsoever, and, um, the perspective that we looked at is pre-K is, uh, it's, it's a little bit different from kindergarten, um, going into the kindergarten as far as, um, uh, well, academic, uh, for instance, but there's also, there is, uh, the sped element that you had talked about, so I don't know if there's anything else on that in that you want to talk about, or Mark, if there's any comments that you want to make.
Well, that's, that's a great summary, that's, that's pretty much where we came from.
But if you point out that, at that, with that increase, the 466, 4,667 that a regular ed student's cost is, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's 508,000 dollars, roughly, yeah, 700.
We're still not meeting.
It's, but it's a lot closer.
Right.
Because you're still going to, you don't want the regular ed student subsidizing the sped student.
Absolutely, that's why there's a broken out number of 4667, that's, and the 64 percent cost for regular, 64.5 percent cost on the rate we're based on.
So there's still, there's still.
But that's based on the number of students that are enrolled in the program.
Right.
So that can, that number can obviously change each, each year, which again, is one of the reasons why we're.
Right, but so the, the shortfall's not nearly as significant if you remove the special ed student from that.
Correct.
From that formula, so I think that's a reasonable choice, reasonable.
The recommendation, the recommended increase.
But the revenue neutral and all that, and, and again, in my mind, is not even a conversation to be.
Well, we can't get there.
No, I, I, they're, they're different, extended day and pre-K K are, are different animals, but I, I don't think we can actually lump them all together, in my opinion, but.
Okay, Mark?
Um, Neil summarized my views equally well, and so I go along with proposal, proposal one with the administration.
Does anyone have any, I'm just going to let y'all jump in, Kathy?
Just, I, I'm curious whether, Brooke, you know, if other districts find themselves in this, a similar situation with regard to pre-K.
That's a great question. I think everybody's, everybody tries to get to where I'd like to get to, I think we're all there, we're, we're just not running. We're just not running an efficient pre-K program right now. The way that it's structured in our three communities, it is, it, so if you get, again, let me go back to the example, if you have one, one sped child-
Right.
And 10 role models-
Right.
You're paying for the regular teacher, you're paying for the sped teacher, you're paying for the pair.
Right.
And to do that over and over again is, is not cost-efficient or cost-effective. So we need to really look at how we're offering that pre-K program, and how we can consolidate some of this to make it make sense. I think that, in all honesty, I'm not sure that this is an area that's had a light shone on it.
Okay.
I'm not being negative, but I, I think it's, again, one of those things that we just kinda need to dig a little deeper on.
Okay.
Brooke, could you, 'cause I think it's important, what you just said, and you talked about with us in FinCom, and, and I never knew this. And so this really opened my eyes, and I think it might help anybody else that doesn't know, but pre-K in, let's say, a private setting versus pre-K as the state defines it, is different. And with regards to the, the special ed component to that. And I'm just wondering if, if you could explain the way you explained to us today, how that works, because I think it's important for the, for everyone to understand.
And I think that, you know, and I said to you earlier, I think to bring Joan DeAngelis in on this discussion at some point, at some point in time, not right now, but to, to listen to her perspective as well. And yet again, the fact that we've got Joan DeAngelis in this picture should send a very clear message, right? That is our Director of Pupil and Personnel Services, who oversees all of our sped. And so she, in fact, is spearheading a lot of the work in this area for us right now, as we're looking further down the road beyond 2018. Because we really need to. And so anytime you have like a sped student come in, we generally have about five slots per class that we look for, you know, the sped kids to go into, then you look for about 10 role model children, so you kinda get, that's just an average. I mean, every class is a little bit different, but you try to aim for that five and then 10 below, and for totals about 15. But that's why you have the pre-K, is really, to your point earlier, it's intervention.
Right.
And you look, so when we open up the slots for the regular ed kids, it is with the notion that these are role model children that we're looking at. But pre-K as such really looks to, to provide intervention services, and so that's why you've got a pair in the room and sped services involved, whatever those sped services are. So those are all things that we need to take into, into account. Which is why it's important that you break out the costs like we did, so, so that the pre-K, the pre-K sped students stand on, alone over here. And aren't, you know, in terms of the fiscal component, so that there's no interlinking.
So it's like an inclusionary program, rather than like a Montessori type of program?
Absolutely inclusive, that's absolutely right.
And that's state mandated, too.
Yes.
I just wondered if the Finance Subcommittee thought, since, since you thought it's a lower percent increase for the kindergarten, if you sort of discussed something less than the 35, 34, or something low.
No, we didn't have, like, negotiate between the two, kinda get like a little-
I just, I was just thinking, since there's no chance that it'll be revenue neutral, and since, since you say that there's, that it, there's a good chance it's operating inefficient, I don't know if that was the word.
Inefficiently.
Inefficiently now.
It is right now.
So justifying such a big increase when we don't know that the money's being spent as well as it could be at this point? I don't, maybe-
I think, I think we wanna be cautious with how we phrase the, phrase it and frame it.
I don't know.
Yeah, because, you know, to be honest with you, if you, if you only have, you know, it depends on what lens you're looking at. When you take a look at that kind of a classroom combination, it depends what side of the fence you might sit on, or your vantage point, or your views, or whatever. I'm looking at strictly from a fiscal lens right now, 'cause that's what our discussion is, is the fiscal component of it. Saying right now, to have several classes running right now with one and 10, is not an efficient use of time. It would make much better sense to combine some of those classes together. But what will happen as soon as we do that, was it will take down the number of role model-
Slots.
Slots that are available. However, we have to keep in mind that the program is not just intended for the role models. And so I, we wanna make sure that that doesn't get lost in relations.
And I think the argument could be made that the role models benefit from being with-
Oh, absolutely. Oh, no, absolutely, when I use that language, it's just to differentiate, that's all that is.
But if you're, if you're cutting down on the number of regular ed students and increasing the number of special needs students per class, then it's not efficiencies as far as money goes, 'cause you're actually, the cost per class is actually going to be higher at that point.
It's efficiencies as far as programming.
But your, so your sped numbers are finite, it's a fixed number, I mean, it's just fluctuate based on the year, but so you, if you combine the classes, you don't have, you, you don't have more sped kids. You have what you have.
No, you end up with a lottery for the regular ed kids, is what ends up happening, you have no, no slots.
But the, but the sped part of this budget is, or this cost is gonna stay, is gonna stay the same, regardless of how you structure the classrooms.
Right, with the known, with what we know right now, today.
Cost per class goes out, right, not cost per program.
Right.
So...
So these are the things that we've been wrestling with for the last couple of months. You know, these are not, these are not easy discussions to have. They're not even easy discussions for us to have in our offices right now, as we try to work this through. So, this is not easy for you folks, I, right, I understand that.
So your recommendation, Finance Subcommittee, is?
Going with the administration's proposal number one.
And Kathy?
I can read it.
Nicole?
Yeah, I like it.
Susan? I didn't.
Yes, couldn't hear.
Yes!
I mean, I wish it were lower, but...
And Lynn?
If it helps at all, I mean, look at the numbers, it consolidates, it's, it's really kind of reasonable, seriously.
So you're a yes?
Yeah.
And Sue, Jennifer, and Mark, and Neil's a yes?
We'll leave it, oh.
Yeah, wait a second, I'm, I'm, I just, wait, I need to digest this.
Now, there is still tuition assistance for families that qualify.
Yes.
Doesn't, you know, doesn't change.
Well, there is?
Yeah.
I don't, why am I feeling sick to my stomach over this one?
It's a significant difference.
In my-
And I understand, I know, and I underst, I get what the cost is to do preschool in a daycare setting. Or a, yeah, in a daycare-
Or an independent preschool setting.
That's what I meant, it's expensive, it's a little more expensive than this. 'Cause this is a month, it's eight, a thousand dollars? Okay, all right, folks, folks, we're in the middle of a meeting, so, let's, someone can go ahead and make a motion.
Move we approve proposal one for increasing the tuition for the integrated preschool.
Second.
Any questions? Jennifer seconded. All those in favor? Too unanimous. All right, we'll revisit kindergarten on Wednesday. One of the brilliant members suggested that, I can't remember who it was, but we'll let that go.
Can I ask a question? Does this now influence some people to say no, raise whatsoever on the kindergarten rates?
Not me.
Me. It does influence me.
I'm just trying to understand right now, if that's gonna make, like, if people think it's gonna make a difference in-
It does influence me.
Right, that's the point, right.
Does it influence you?
Mm-hmm.
I think you and I are in the same boat.
Right, I know. Top of the stack.
So, given that-
I mean, given the fact that preschool is a multi-year thing, so you could conceivably have two kids, you know, basically, one day and two days.
You could have, this is the-
Well, I think, I think- I think the reason it influences me is because we are talking about not just a philosophical discussion, but the movement towards the full-day K. I just, again, before we ever have that, we ever get to that vote, I need to know that the parents that don't want their kids in full-day K don't have to have their kids in full-day K, but can put them in their home district. That's my biggest, but I'm, I'm, I can be there now. So given that, does everyone feel strongly enough, 'cause I think I was the question mark on the K, does someone wanna make a motion on the K? Would you rather wait?
I'd like a motion, if it doesn't work, then let's just-
That's right.
Go with that. I make a motion that we accept last year's rate as this year's rate for kindergarten.
I'm second.
Should not change the rates, don't you say?
So not change the rate.
Increase the rate.
So, any questions, comments, Laura, please no. Okay, all those in favor?
Of not increasing the-
Of not increasing the rates? And all those opposed? Well, we're split, so unless someone wants-
Good point.
Pardon? It fails. So unless someone wants to make another motion-
Make a motion, we wait till Wednesday.
I would suggest that we wait till Mo, Wednesday. Okay, let's do it. Thank you.
If raising the rate fails, the same way that not not raising the rate.
So we're gonna come back to it on Wednesday, 'cause we're, we're out of time here on this agenda. Okay, thank you guys, and Neil and Mark and Jennifer, thank you so much, that was really strong conversation. Correspondents, I have two, I have a parent who's had some repeated bus, bus issues, which look like they may finally be getting addressed, which is great news, and concerns on the full-day K. So the timing on the discussion is helpful. And then there was a parent who reached out about the FY 18 calendar in consideration for flipping some of the dates to align with Rosh Hashanah and Passover.
Yeah, I can't recall.
Yeah, they have the dates.
But I think that Anne Marie is addressing that. Neil?
I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on motions. Can I make a motion for kindergarten to raise the rate by 10%?
Neil, we're gonna do it on Wednesday. I don't think we're ready.
We can make the vote now?
We're, we're gonna do it on Wednesday.
We'll have a second.
Yeah, let's, yeah, why don't you, make your day, you know what? Any one of you seconds, we're talking in the pipeline afterwards. For God's sake, you do have to challenge everything.
Well, no, because then if it gets shot down tonight, it's done. Then there can be an increase, because-
No, there could be, because someone could say, I make a motion that we increase the rate 10.01%.
Well, that's fine.
We're moving on, no, we're moving on. So did everybody take a look at the meeting minutes of February 15? Any questions? Consider them approved, and items for the next agenda?
I just, I looked ahead at Wednesday's agenda, we had said that Brooke was gonna do her mid-year report on her goals.
I thought we had put that to March, actually, that's what, that was my-
I thought it was March 1st, so it's not March 1st.
Oh, you're right, March 1st.
It was March other day.
Are you ready to do it?
It's the month, the last 28 days.
It's just the goals, not everything.
Okay. Poor Brooke, she not looking at the goal page.
Make it into February. Okay. I'm sorry, I have to be the, the gatekeeper on the whole evaluation thing. Huh? Make it quick. I just have to cross off my list, I'm one of those.
Well, no, the, the 48 hours is to post the agenda, we could add items to it.
Oh, according to MASC.
Yeah, as long as you, as long as the chair didn't reasonably expect the topic to be-
Well, I certainly didn't reasonably expect that.
Then it can be added. It can't be reposted, but it can be added.
Does it have to be done March 1st?
Okay, it had to be done either the end of January or the beginning of February. So if we take it to the next meeting in March, that we can't do it ever?
Well, then that's the, that's the work, that's the, the hearing, that's the hearing.
That's Monday, that's Wednesday.
This week is the hearing.
The first is the hearing.
This week.
The 15th.
Can we do it on the 15th?
Okay.
I'm fine, honestly, I'm fine either way, whatever you want.
Whatever, Lorraine, as long as it gets done, because in a month and a half, we have to write the thing, we have to write the valuation.
Okay. So, what, I, I don't have the first in front of me, Alita.
The first is just budget.
Just the budget.
And I think we're in a good place on that, you guys? So go ahead and add it on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I won't bother you to vote it again.
All right, that's it, so we have an executive session. Can someone make a, is it? Yeah, it's a quickie.
I missed that one of the amendments.
It's a quickie, so, does someone wanna make the motion?
Let's go into executive session. Pursuant to Ms. General Raw, Question 30A, Subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to election bargaining through units A, and see if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining the legislative positions of the public body in the chair, so declares not to recontinue effective regular set.
Second.
Second. And Kathy's seconded it. Nicole?
Hi.
Susan, oh, you're out.
Well, I can, yeah, she can vote her- Motion to-
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Kathy? Yes, yeah, Mark?
Yes.
Neil, Lynn? Say it, do it all the time, Jennifer, yes, and Neil?
And you know it is.
Yes, all right.